Is there a God of emotion?
She went to go get him. Draft motion.
All right, we are, we are live on Zoom and we're also live on YouTube. So we can go ahead and get started.
Okay, I hereby call to order the June 12th, 2024 meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission. We'll first begin with roll call, Commission Member Hennessy. I'm here. Commission Member Kramer. Commission Member Whitmore.
Here.
Commission Member Sandridge is remote and he's going to be reading a statement, I believe.
Adam, you are muted if you can hear us.
I am back. With that, due to being out of town for a personal matter, I'm participating remotely for the June 12th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. And Commission Member Beebe also is remote and has a statement to read.
Can you all hear me?
We can hear you. I'll try to get the volume up again.
Due to being out of town for a personal matter, I am participating remotely for the June 12th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. And so the important notices, do you have something or we're just going on with the meeting now?
That's just the normal.
Okay, okay. In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to view or participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. One, to join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar. The link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. This time, we will proceed with the meeting and we will proceed with citizen comments. Do we have anyone physically here to speak about anything not on the agenda? Hey, Mr. Russell, come and state your name and magisterial district. You have three minutes.
Bill Russell, Cars Creek District. I'd like to comment on the process for updating the county planning documents that you have been going through for, I know now, almost a year. And the ability for meaningful public participation in that. We're, we're going to meetings where we don't have the language of the changes and updates to the plan. They have not been issued to the public. They've not been posted. And they were not at the meeting we were at. I can't make meaningful comments on, on that. I've read the plan. And I have meaningful comments for the plan as it is, but I don't know precisely what the changes are. And I think it's incumbent on this as a governmental body to engage in getting that out in a timely fashion so that the public can comment, can participate, and can knowingly add something of value to this process. I also have a separate thing on this, on a comment on the solar activities. And, and they have to do with the scope of information being sought from applicants. We still are continuing to require a disclosure of beneficial ownership from the applicants. And from people who already have it, you know, it's, it's very difficult that already have accepted applications or have pending ones. It's very difficult to find who the actual owners are. I know because I've gone through this and I've tracked some down through seven different companies. And again, I don't think the public can make really meaningful comments about solar providers if they don't know exactly who it is that owns the application. And I'm not going to be melodramatic, but we don't know that these aren't, you know, owned by TikTok or somebody, a Chinese corporation. I don't see a reason for not getting that information. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your input. I appreciate that.
Next signed up is Michelle Johnson.
Good evening. Michelle Johnson, Cars Creek. I wish to echo the comments that were made about the process for the public input on the planning documents. No drafts were available for us last night at Cars Creek. There were about, I didn't count, but about 10 people, 10 citizens there. Very interested, very concerned about solar, very interested in the airport, very interested in the process. There was nothing for them to review. I've checked today. I haven't, I, I may have not been able to find it on the website, but I didn't see any draft posted. And it doesn't seem fair or appropriate to ask the public to comment and not give them something to review and to, you know, tell them not to worry about it. That's not the purpose of a public comment period. So I would urge the Planning Commission. I mean, I understand that there's a lot of things going on for a very small staff. But things can't be worked out at the to the detriment of the public's right to know and understand, have the opportunity to review, discuss with their neighbors, and provide input. That can't be the part that makes it all work taking that away. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That is all that signed up to speak, but we will check online to see if I have any comments. If anyone's online that'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand now. Not saying anything, I'll pull it back.
Okay. All right, we are now on Agenda Item Three, Minutes for the May 8th, 2024 meeting. Have you all had a chance to review them?
I wouldn't.
Okay.
Wasn't here either, but I reviewed them.
Okay. Mr. Beebe?
Yes.
Did you all have a chance? Did you all were the ones here? The two that are here have not, you know, were not here at that meeting, but did you and Mr. Sandridge get an opportunity to review the minutes?
I did.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can one of you make a motion?
I make a. Go ahead, Adam.
All right, I'm making a motion to approve the minute meetings.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. And do we have a second?
A second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Minutes are approved as submitted. We're now ready for the board reports.
Yes, at their May 28th, 2024 meeting, the Board of Supervisors approved the Three Dominion Energy applications associated with the property on River Road. That, of course, was the use of the property as a, as a heliport, temporary heliport. The use of the property of, of, of storage in the floodway as a use of the floodway. And then third, the use by special exception of a public utility laydown yard. With that, the Planning Commission had recommended, this, this was associated with the timeframe extension of those three projects, of course. With that, the Planning Commission approved the special exception application, the extension of the timeframe, I should say, as recommended by the Planning Commission. At the June 11th, 2024 meeting this past Monday, the Board of Supervisors denied the Lewis W. Hamilton Jr. and Kendra Hamilton's application for a special event venue along Irish Creek. And the primary concern was adverse impacts to the adjacent properties.
Okay. And do we have an update on the Solar Committee?
The Solar Committee, I think I reported last time, the Solar Committee has finalized its work. And we will, of course, we're going through the Comprehensive Plan update as we speak. With that being said, as soon as we're done with that, we are going to plan on the Joint Planning Commission. It'll be a joint session between the Planning Commission, the Solar Committee, and the Board of Supervisors. And that's going to happen during the same time as the Comprehensive Plan or very soon after. I can guarantee you the, the document will not sit on the shelf.
Okay. And Community Development Committee, do we have an update there?
Uh, that, that we did have a hold, the Community Development Committee discussed previous and past planning commissions, some solar discussion. And the next Community Development Committee is scheduled for the third Monday of the month.
Okay. And just, I was not able to be at the Cars Creek meeting last night. It sounds like there were several 10 people or so that were at that meeting. Was that our first meeting about the Comprehensive Plan?
That was our first of five. Yes, ma'am. And I did apologize. Our goal was obviously have that published prior to. Of course, this has been a very public process with it being zoomed on YouTube and Zoom. The public's always welcome to attend, obviously. We started this process and with monthly updates, I should say, of what was discussed and what was changed. That can all be viewed on YouTube or citizens could come to the meeting and participate in that. With that being said, depending on the nature of the outcome of the, the review of the Transportation Chapter and the Land Use Chapter night, we already posted directly after this meeting.
So if people want to go on and see as we've been going through this process, they can go back and look at the previous meetings. They're all on.
Yes.
Online. I just want to make sure everybody knows where they can find it.
The continuation of that.
So the next one, so we're going to have a joint public, I'm sorry, we're going to have a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday. That's with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, the 25th. That's at the Virginia Horse Center at six o'clock in the Mezzanine Center. Y'all will get notice. There'll be notice of a public meeting, obviously. Then after that, the tentative date with the Planning Commission is at y'all's July meeting. After review of state, state code, both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors are required to hold a, a public hearing. And so that will be advertised accordingly.
And that will be in July. So June 25th at the Virginia Horse Center.
Yes.
Is going to be basically a work session which the public is invited to attend.
Absolutely, yes.
And then July will be when planning and Board of Supervisors has a public hearing.
And I can review those dates again for everybody. So, so the, obviously, the 25th is a Tuesday at six o'clock at the Horse Center. The next Planning Commission, which is your tentative public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan is July 10th. That's at seven o'clock as always at the Planning Commission with the Planning Commission in this room. And then tentatively with the Board of Supervisors on the 22nd of Monday, the 22nd, that meeting starts at 5:30 held in this room. And I say tentative dates based on a lot of different variables. But both of those will be, the, the, both of them, the public hearings will be advertised accordingly. The notice of public meeting will be advertised accordingly for the 25th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number Five. K Creek LLC, 195 Walker Creek, Lexington, Virginia, 24450. Application for a special exception permit, SEP, to expand an existing storage business in the general business B1 zoning district. You have a presentation?
Yes, let me, let me catch up with you real quick. Both the member of K Creek LLC, Mr. Michael Sterns is here representing the project as well as the engineer for the project, Mr. Russ Orson. I'm going to pull it up on my screen. Bear with me here. Share my screen. All right. All right, KC Creek LLC, Michael Sterns, manager, 195 Walker Street, Lexington, Virginia, 24450. Has made an application for a special exception permit to expand slash develop the storage business in the general business zone, B1. The property is outlined in magenta. It consists, or the property is currently owned by Menesino LLC, 11, 511 East Nelson Street, Lexington, Virginia, 24450. KC LL Creek is the contract purchaser. It's located off of Smokey, Smokey, excuse me, Sophie Place, which is a private road. I'm going to turn on my aerial photo, give you some context there. Approximately 0.14 miles north of the intersection of Staret Road. Staret Road is further identified as 710. The property is known as Fairfield Square, as further identified as tax map number 39-a-24 and consists of 7.05 acres per tax record. The property is in the general business zoning district, B1 zoning district per section 605.03-12 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. The wholesale business, storage, or warehouse are used by special exception in the B1 zoning district. On April 26th, 2017, the Board of Supervisors approved a special applicant, a special exception application in order for the current owners to rebuild one of the two existing units. One of the, the second existing, now existing units on the property. There were not any conditions associated with that permit. The, the, the notice of public hearing stated to replace many storage units on the property. The previous owner had taken down a storage unit. So this was the original location. If you can see my cursor, this was the original location of the first storage unit on the property. The previous owner had taken down, previous prior to Menesino LLC, I should say, had taken down and relocated the storage unit. So the, the relocated storage unit was from here to here. And it was, the relocation was essentially for a retail project that never came to fruition. So when the current owner purchased it, they made the application for a special exception to essentially rebuild this existing storage unit. So to be clear, there's currently two storage units on the property. The purpose of the, the April 26th, 2017 special exception was to build the second unit on the concrete slab, the existing concrete slab. KC Creek LLC has made an application to construct two additional units for a total of four. With that, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Sterns and Mr. Orson. I will also share my screen as it pertains to the application. I'm going up and I'll get the, I do, yes. I'm actually closing this stuff out so I can find it.
He's done it a few times, right?
So if you have your maps in front of you that, that show the special exception plan. There you go. The, the narrative is there. This is existing storage, existing storage, existing building has franks and, and the airplay. And we're simply going to go into this unused area and build over time, probably one.
One initially.
One initially, and then hopefully one future one on that slope. You really can't see this from Route 11 at all. And I've, I've tried to remember to look from 81 where this is. And I forget because you can only see it for just a second. And I've, I've never seen it from 81, but if someone was diligent, I think they could see it from 81 because you can see some traffic going by. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I don't know that there's a lot more to say about it.
Yep. I don't have any questions. I'm wondering why it's a special exception when it's in the business zoning, but just wondering why it's a special exception if we're in a business zone.
Well, essentially, some, some would say there's, you know, it's some appropriate uses of the business zone for many storage business and some less desirable locations as far as the economy goes, as far as economic.
Okay. What, what is the cutout? What's in the middle of the?
That was the Food Line parcel. It still is. Food Line owns that parcel. It was approved 10 years ago.
Yeah.
2008, somewhere there for a Food Line, and they just never.
Never did it.
Moved ahead of it, but actually Food Line still owns that parcel.
I've never, a little commentary there on the side, I've never seen the project get that far. They went through the TCO Design and Construction Guidelines. They went through the TCO process, site plan approval. They applied for a building permit. They submitted building permit plans. The building permit was sitting there ready for a couple of months. So we called and said, hey, you know, your building permit's ready. They said, oh, sorry, we, we pulled the plug. So I've never seen, I've seen some projects come through site plan that never came fruition, obviously. But as far as an actual, actual active building permit, I had not seen that before. Or since then, I should say, on a project of that size.
Very good. Thank you.
With that being said, the, if, if approved by the board, if recommended approval, this project will have to be required to go through the TCO for the review authority.
What's the timeline on this? You said you want to do one now?
One initially. So as soon as it was approved, that would start construction, the first one, and then.
And right now, there's two out there that are occupied, being used as.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so you just need more space, more of them. Okay. All right, any questions?
It's in the plan with this new Arbor Vodies planned. Is that, it says required, 25-foot buffer required, commercial agricultural. Is that, is that, you address that, Chris?
Yes, there is a required, the rear there to the rear. Can't remember who the property owner name is, but that is, I can bring up the zoning map that's needed.
Yeah, so this is ag zoning. It's fairly notable. That's how we address it. Those existing, I guess, along the rest of the property line. Right, there is, there is. You can see a little bit in the aerial photograph, but there truly is out in the field. There's, there's a buffer there. And your ordinance does allow existing buffers to count as long as they carry out the function it's intended.
So to review the surrounding zoning, obviously, the property under consideration, it's own general business, B1. Food Line, of course, B1 as well, towards the, that'd be sort of the north. It's industrial zoning district. Across Lee Highway is ag transitional. Back south is business zoning, and then, of course, rear is agricultural for transition.
Thank you.
Next time, can we insist that Mr. Beebe appear in person?
He has to go. All right, we'll tell him the next time you're here, he has to be here.
I'm on my way.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak?
There's no one signed up. We recognize anybody that'd like to speak.
Okay, seeing no one, we can look for anyone on the computer or by phone.
There's no one online with their hands raised.
Okay. With no further comment, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Discussion here.
I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the special exception permit to expand slash develop a storage business in the general business B slash one zoning district be approved with the following conditions. Substantial compliance with concept plan prepared by Perkins and Orson titled special exception plan showing proposed storage buildings. TM number 39-a-24 Creek Venue.
I think it's supposed to be K Creek maybe?
K Creek.
K Creek Venue.
Venue Pavilion slash or dash construction layout and otherwise dated February 28th, 2024.
Let me, let me check that. I apologize for not having these motions prepared for y'all. This is going to be, I apologize, it's going to be tax map 39-a-24, but the title is going to be special exception plan showing proposed storage buildings, tax map 39-a-24, South River Magisterial District.
Okay, so what he said.
Yeah, and number two, approval contingent on county building department, comma, Virginia Department of Transportation approvals.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
Approval to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, approval. Okay, thank you guys for coming. Yeah, we are on to Agenda Item Number Six, Rockbridge County, 150 South Main Street, Lexington, Virginia, 24450. Application for zoning text amendment, ZTA, to modify section 302, specific definitions. Section 302.95, general store country of the regulations to include provisions for a restaurant with the use of a general store, comma, country.
Yes, we've been chatting about this for a little bit as well. At its January 10th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission discussed the zoning text amendment to modify the definition of a country store general and to provide the use of a restaurant. Obviously, this was in, in context of a, a larger zoning text amendment to define or redefine, I should say, restaurants and then specify some regulations pertaining to food trucks. Provided you with the current definition per section 302.95 of a general store country. Just like to say, you know, per section 603.03-6 of the regulations, general stores, country general stores and antique shops are used by special exception in the A2 zoning district. And then per section 603B, O3 dash one of the regulations, general stores, country general stores and antique shops are used by special exception in the agricultural transitional line. Further, provided the, the definition per section 302, the current definition per section 302-170 of a restaurant. At its April 10th, 2024 meeting, the Fighting Commission instructed staff to advertise for the public hearing for zoning text amendments that provides restaurants in conjunctions with a general store. Sorry, let me stop sharing real quick. Staff failed. Apologize. Last month, I found myself doing that a lot now. Staff, staff failed to advertise the notice public hearing for the May 8th, 2024 meeting. Therefore, the, the public hearing was not held. Staff has made the proper notice for the June 12th Planning Commission meeting. The proposed zoning text amendment includes additional language to provide the restaurant to be included for the use of a country store. And then in your, in your package, and I'm also going to bring it up on the screen for the public as well. Simply put, we're adding a, the, the, as you see on your screen here, the black is the existing definition of a general store country. And we have added language stating that a restaurant may be operated on the premise which provides meals to the general public. So with that, staff has no additional comments.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak on this item?
There is not. No one signed up. If we might recognize anybody that'd like to speak.
Okay. Anyone via computer or phone that would like to speak?
There is not.
With no further comments, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Do you have any questions? This is pretty straightforward. We've talked about this for quite a while, so we're set to go. Go ahead.
Yep, so.
We do not have a prayer motion, but it'd be a motion to recommend approval of the proposed zoning text amendments associated with the country store.
I recommend we approve the, or we recommend approval of the zoning text amendments for the definition of a restaurant and country store.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. And that is approved. So we will recommend approval for the Board of Supervisors. We are on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the Comprehensive Plan Update. And we are on the Transportation Chapter and the Land Use Chapter.
That's correct. As you know, the Central Shandell Planning District Commission has been assisting the development of the transportation plan. The draft chapter was provided at last month's meeting. The purpose of this meeting, Mr. Zach Beard is in attendance, senior planner with the Central Shandell Planning District Commission to present the draft chapter in a more formal fashion to the Planning Commission. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Beard. I'm going to share my screen and get your PowerPoint brought up.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, Chris. I need to, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I think it'd be all right. It, it is harder here on YouTube, so.
Yep.
Okay. Well, if any point you guys are having trouble hearing me, just, just let me know. But good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Zach Beard. I'm a planner with the Central Shandell Planning District Commission. As Chris mentioned, we are helping county planning staff update the Transportation Chapter of the comp plan. The Transportation Chapter in particular is the only chapter that is subject to a specific set of criteria outlined in Virginia State Code. So often, there's more research and work that goes into updating this chapter in particular. And with this update, there's probably more significant changes that occurred when updating this chapter in comparison in relation to other chapters in the comp plan update so far. So we just wanted to kind of take the time this evening, provide an opportunity to touch on kind of the main changes that have occurred between the 2016 version and this most current version that we are updating. And then give you an opportunity to provide comments or questions at the end. So I met with the Community Development Committee back in April. We reviewed the initial draft and we walked through a series of questions to identify the transportation needs and projects. We reviewed the initial draft and we walked through a series of questions to identify the transportation needs and projects. County staff provided a brief update on that chapter and shared it with the planning commission last month. So this evening, again, I'm just going to kind of keep it focused, not on walking through line by line the chapter, but really focused on two of the main sections in this chapter. Those being the section on transportation needs and the section on transportation projects. Those are probably the sections that have the most significant changes and are the most salient sections of the chapter in general. Next. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay. So kind of three takeaways from this presentation this evening. One, just understand that the Virginia State Code requirements are really kind of driving the update for the transportation chapter specifically. Two, understand that the safety and congestion data are essential for the identification and needs and projects. So VDOT will not fund future transportation projects unless they are directly tied to a safety or congestion related need that's based on real world data. So it's important to document those transportation needs and that transportation data within your comp plan. Third, just kind of have a general understanding of the transportation needs and projects that are documented in this chapter. So I've mentioned Virginia State Code. It requires kind of four main sections within a transportation chapter, existing conditions. So really just documenting just the existing transportation network, outlining growth assumptions. So that's really based on population projections over a twenty twenty-five year period. And also growth in employment over that time period as well, and the impacts of population and employment growth on the future transportation network. Documenting current and future transportation needs. And then documenting specific transportation projects that directly address the needs that we have outlined in the chapter. So again, I mentioned that I will focus on sections three and four of the chapter. This is just a outline of kind of where we started, where we're at, and where we're going in this process with the transportation chapter update. As I mentioned, we met with the Community Development Committee back in mid-April. And here we are in about the middle of June at the second planning commission meeting. And you can see that is anticipated that the county will approve the chapter and the entire document in July. Also wanted to note as a part of Virginia State Code. Not only do we have to have those kind of four main sections required in the chapter, but we have to formally submit the transportation chapter to VDOT for approval. So VDOT has to review the transportation chapter and make sure that we're checking all the boxes when it comes to all the state code criteria. If the chapter is not approved by VDOT, then it is technically not compliant with state code, which means that the entire comp plan would not be compliant with state code. So it kind of underpins the importance of updating the transportation chapter specifically. And also kind of just wanted to outline this process specifically because after this meeting, we anticipate submitting the draft chapter to VDOT for their formal review. So we can make sure we're getting them to sign off on this before it goes before the board for their consideration of approval next month. Okay, so as I mentioned, I'm going to focus on needs and projects. We'll first focus on the needs section. So in the county specifically, all public roads are owned by VDOT. And the transportation projects must be identified on, must be based on identified documented and quantifiable transportation needs, which typically are based on two data sets, safety and congestion. So for example, Smart Scale, that's DDOT's kind of main transportation project grant funding program, will not fund a project unless it's directly tied to a safety or congestion need or some other transportation related need that's based on data. So looking at the two thousand sixteen version of the transportation chapter. The chapter overall was forty-seven pages and the needs section within that version of the chapter was less than one page. So this is kind of basically a bulleted summary of the main takeaways from that two thousand sixteen chapter from the needs section. So it really touched on mentioning, it mentions a companion document that was developed in two thousand eleven. It mentions the Route sixty corridor project recommendations. It mentions concerns around exit two oh five, then also kind of touched on some general bike pad improvements. So with this new update, we really kind of wanted to provide a lot more structure and make it data driven and really kind of walk through all of these main kind of aspects of project development that that VDOT looks at when they are assessing transportation projects. And you can see that bulleted list on your screen. Those are kind of the subsections within that needs section that we touch on throughout the chapter. And really primarily looking at congestion and safety as those primary needs. So first kind of just walk through some congestion related data. So VDOT uses average daily traffic data to provide a general baseline and approximation of future transportation network congestion. ADT is based on historic traffic counts and historic linear growth rates. So the two maps on your screen, you can see the average daily traffic in two thousand twenty-two and then VDOT's ADT projections out to two thousand forty-five and how those compare. And I know the maps can be hard to see. But I think if you're just generally looking at colors and looking at the differences in colors between both maps, you'll notice that there are minimal changes being projected between ADT now and out being projected over the next twenty-five years. That said, it is projected that most roadways in the county will see at least about ten percent increase in ADT over the next twenty-five years. So besides eighty-one, the Route eleven corridor north of Lexington, including the Greenhouse Road area, the segment of Route eleven between eighty-one exits one ninety-five and two hundred, they have the largest increase in projected traffic volume over the next twenty-five years. This slide just shows some of that previous data in table form, listing the specific difference between current year ADT and future year ADT and that percentage increase in a Bob specific roadways. So I think this summarizes the top ten roads in the county. The top ten roads with the highest traffic volume increased over the next twenty years. You can see that, no surprise, Route eleven, there just north of Lexington and the Greenhouse Road area is projected just by sheer traffic count projections will have the most ADT in two thousand forty-five. That segment of roadway is currently the busiest roadway in the county as it is now and will continue to be over the next twenty years. And you can kind of see, just going down the list, some roads are experiencing a larger percentage increase in ADT over the next twenty years.
Excuse me, what, what is ADT? I'm looking on here trying to see where it tells me what ADT is and what LOS is, you know, there's all these.
It's ADT's average daily traffic. So if you've ever seen those
counters, yeah.
Counters going across the road, that's, that's what those are for.
What's LOS?
I will get to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just make sure I know what it is. Is it, is there anything in here that has like a, I mean, this is an appendix, but something that says ADT, is this just for?
It's directly, yeah, it's, it's, it's explained within the chapter, within that section.
There's not like a little thing that's saying, you know, kind of like a dictionary that says ADT is this and this is.
Yeah. The, the chapter does pretty much define it within the text, so.
Just know a lot of people, you know, if you're looking at a chart, it'd be easier if it were right there instead of going back and trying to read through. But sure, that's just a thought.
So also another way that VDOT measures current and future year congestion is not only through ADT, average daily traffic, but level of service. So this measures roadway congestion based on whether travel demand exceeds roadway capacity. So really kind of based on how the, the geometry of the roadway and how much traffic a certain roadway can accommodate, whether that is at or above its limit. And it uses a scale from A to F to kind of characterize congestion with A being the best or essentially free flowing, no problems, and F being worse, meaning just basically gridlock and consistent backups. And C is, you know, kind of somewhere in between. So VDOT uses past traffic volume trends to predict future year LOS based on the assumption that no future improvements will be made to the transportation network. So it is a fairly basic model. It's kind of just based on historic traffic data and then just literally projects that out. And it's not assuming that any other traffic improvements will be made over that period of time. So that's kind of something important to keep in mind when you're looking at these traffic projections in particular. It's pretty hard to look out over a twenty to twenty-five year timeframe. So these numbers and these projections are, you know, assumptions based on data. And obviously, they are subject to change. So current two thousand twenty-two level of service data indicates that all roads in the county are rated either A, B, or C, except a small segment of Route eleven from Route sixty to Link Road South of Lexington, which is rated D. If you squint, you can see a little orange wiggly line just south of Lexington there on the map. And that's the only segment that is rated worse than C. Overall, all roads in the county essentially have free flowing traffic and minimal congestion. Twenty fifty level of service estimates indicate that with, even with thirty percent or more vehicles on the road, excuse me, with thirty percent or more vehicles on the road for Interstate I eighty-one, that roadway in particular is expected to experience a significant increase in congestion with most segments rated D, E, or F. Outside of eighty-one, the county's existing roadway network has sufficient excess capacity to accommodate any additional traffic without a significant reduction in level of service over the next twenty to twenty-five years. Most roadways are projected to main the existing level of service of A or B. However, there are five segments projected to decrease in LOS between the next twenty-five years down to a letter grade of C, which is, you know, a modest decline, but I wanted to just note that those roadways nonetheless there on the screen.
So you mentioned those five or whatever, but then there's also the one, two, three, four, five, six, really seven, but six that are D, E, or F for twenty fifty. They're all statewide planning that have to do with the interstate.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. That's pretty bad to go from a C to an F, you know, Route six oh six to Route seven ten, you know, a few of those in there.
It is a
Pretty graphic.
It's significant change, especially along the interstate. You want me to proceed, Chris?
Yes, I'm sorry, we got straightened out. Some, some reason it wasn't transitioning with the slides, so I believe it is now. Thank you. Sorry for that.
But just looking at some tractor trailer traffic data, which I'll just more simply refer to as truck, truck traffic. Most truck traffic obviously occurs on both interstates. You can see that indicated on the map in the red and orange lines. And then kind of outside of the interstates, you can see a few orange and yellow lines throughout the county that indicate various elevated levels of truck, truck track, truck traffic on those roads. So in particular, there is five to ten percent truck traffic on Route thirty-nine, Route five oh one, Route eleven, and some, some segments are near ten percent truck traffic near Brownsburg and also the segment of US sixty east of BV. So that's just a quick summary of truck traffic in the county. Also, looking at truck parking, according to two thousand twenty-two VDOT data, the county needed around fifty additional public and private parking, truck parking spaces to meet demand, truck, truck parking demand in two thousand twenty-two. Lehigh Travel Plaza, which has three hundred and thirty truck parking spaces. The I eighty-one exit nine, one ninety-five junction is indicated by VDOT as a statewide truck parking hotspot. That meaning that they are in need of forty-six additional truck parking spaces to meet current demand. Conversely, the junction at two oh five is right now projected to have adequate truck parking. And that is one of only two of the state's eighty-two private parking junctions that do not at this time need additional parking to meet current demand. But just to provide some context on truck parking from VDOT's perspective within the county.
I have a question about a couple, so a couple of these, it actually says it's going to get better, like goes C to B. Actually, three different ones are C and B. One of them is I eighty-one to I sixty-four. I just wondered, why would we anticipate that it's going to get better? Are there going to be a project or?
Is that the level of service map you're looking at?
Yeah, level of service from twenty nineteen to twenty fifty.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is a good question. Perhaps it's accounting for recent project improvements. I don't know if it would be. I guess you're saying it's the segment that's transitioning from eighty-one to sixty-four?
That's.
As I know, I don't.
I would have to, I guess, I'm trying to think off the top of my head what, what the reasoning would be. So I would have to make a note of that and follow up.
I am unaware, I'm unaware of any projects planned in the near.
Or maybe something that happened between, I mean, maybe already happened twenty nineteen to present, like did they do a bridge or something?
No, I mean, we did, we did, of course, through the Smart Scale application. We did, the, the county was successful in getting VDOT funding for bona fide left of turn lanes off of I exit two oh five in Rafine, but I don't think that would have an influence on.
That wouldn't have any. The other one says Route six eighty-one to Route eleven was going to upgrade from C to B and also Route seven oh three to. and also Route 703 to 608 from C to B. I just, just wondering what's going on that it's going to get better. Most everything is getting worse.
That's a good question and I am making a note of that and I will ask VDOT about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So does VDOT have any major things? I mean, clearly this is a problem with 81, how many wrecks there are with tractor trailers and fatalities and stuff. And we get a lot of traffic coming on 11 off of the interstate, you know, when there's, I mean, it definitely impacts our community when that happens. Um, I'm just wondering, is there anything planned? Are we going to finally get a third lane? We've been talking about for 20 years or what are they thinking?
Yeah, it's a problem corridor wide, um, within our region. I don't think that within Rockbridge County, are there any further I-81 improvements program for this time?
No, not, not current one. I mean, it's been discussed for sure.
Within our, the Stanton, VDOT Construction District, uh, all the, um, the expansions to a third lane are occurring, um, outside of Stanton and outside of Harrisonburg.
It's that, well, and I see obviously Salem has, you know, down in that Roanoke Salem area, they've, they've gotten some extra lanes in there, which, you know, I guess has helped them, but it just feels like it's funneling here and then we are just getting more and more traffic here, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of extra trucks, it seems, in the last couple of years parking on the,
shoulders.
Yeah, uh, you know, they're not parking in the truck stops, they're parking the.
The off ramps.
Rest areas, they're parking on the ramps and everything. And now that they're, I had a lot of time for looking at this stuff over the last month, but, you know, there are a lot of spaces where it says no parking. And you see these, uh, trucks up there, you know, wonder, well, we're not enforcing anything now. And it's just going to get more traffic and these truckers, uh, send them there paying to park.
It's a, it's a region-wide and a statewide issue, especially with truck parking and I-81. Our region is at a, a deficit from here to Stanton, Harrisonburg and north of Winchester on parking, so.
So my follow-up question is, we're having these meetings and what is the public supposed to get out of this?
So in, in relation to ID, the transportation needs on I-81? Or just in general, the, the transportation chapter and the comp plan update process?
Yeah, there's a lot of information. Anyway, I was just, uh, curious because I wasn't at the one last night that, uh, you know, some people here that asked, uh, I think a very, uh, civil question, you know?
So I think with the, I can speak to the transportation chapters.
Yeah, that's the main one.
So, um, we really put an emphasis on documenting the transportation needs based on current and projected future year data because, uh, projects in the state of Virginia, do not get funded unless they are directly tied to a specific need, um, that's related to safety and congestion. Um, so it's important that, uh, we go through this data documented in the transportation plan. Because this data documenting the needs, which will then inform the development of projects to address those needs. And then those candidate projects can be advanced forward and potential grant applications and various grant funding programs that VDOT has in the future. So that's kind of the idea behind this process. VDOT also emphasizes that if your needs and projects aren't documented in the comprehensive plan, um, that really, uh, makes your grant applications for transportation projects less competitive. Uh, because when you are applying for a lot of the statewide funding, you're competing with projects throughout the entire state. Um, so if your comprehensive plan is not up to date on identifying needs and projects, um, you will be at a disadvantage for funding transportation projects.
And as far as the public, what I would think is they could look at this and say, hey, what about this area? You know, like I've experienced that, you know, they can bring some things, I would say forward.
Where, yes, through that, uh, public engagement process, those needs can be documented in the plan and also, uh, be incorporated into the chapter, um, and reflected in the chapter in some way, um, whether that's, um, looking at areas that need issues where maybe there, uh, a lot of issues that we hear from the public are, um, very good points, but they often need further study and analysis so we can better understand the needs and then specifically identify the projects to address those needs. So there's, it's really kind of a process where, you know, from the bottom up, uh, if it's working correctly, where, uh, you know, a need is expressed and then we go through the process of studying that. And then that leads to a set of recommendations, improvements that then get eventually, um, you know, advanced towards an actual project. Um, I say all that because that is the process and when it works, it works, but there is limited funding to fund these projects for every locality in the state. Um, so it's important to be deliberate, and intentional about the projects, about the needs and the projects that you're advancing with limited state funding available.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so we were first talking about ADT LOS, um, and also truck traffic and truck parking. So those are mainly kind of congestion related needs. Now we're moving on to safety. Uh, just summarizing kind of high level at this point, some crash data uh, in the county. So we looked at crash data all between January 2015 and December 31st of 2023. Within that time period, there were 58 total fatal injury crashes in the county. Um, with a high of nine fatal injury crashes, uh, in 2016 and 19, and a low of four last year, 2023. That averages out to about seven fatal crashes annually in the county. Um, if we remove the crashes that incurred on both interstates, um, the total cra- fatal crash number goes from 58 to 29. Looking at just some fatal crash clusters, so places where, uh, fatal crashes were in close proximity. Over that time period, there were two fatal crashes on Maury River Road near Goshen Pass, two crashes on Ty River Turnpike uh, in the northeast part of the county. Five fatal crashes on West Midland Trail between Fredericksburg Road and Denmark Way and four fatal crashes on 501 between Glasgow and BV.
Sticks out to me is this 13 from Route 11 from North Ridge Lane to the Walmart entrance. 13? Like a big number.
So can, kind of to that point, uh, VDOT, uh, analyzes all this crash data and they, they prioritize safety improvements for intersections and segments that have higher than expected crashes based on, uh, crash rate frequency and crash severity over a five-year period. So if there's more crashes and more severe crashes occurring in a certain location, more so than what they think, they basically then flag that intersection or segment. These segments and intersections are then ranked against other sites, um, throughout the state to kind of determine how competitive they would be, uh, through VDOT grant funding programs. Um, so based on, uh, VDOT's analysis between 2018 and 2022 of crash data, the county had three, um, priority safety intersections and 17 priority safety segments. Outside of 81 and 64, uh, there are 10 total, uh, sites which are reflected in the table on your screen. Route 60 and Route 11 have the most, most of which occur west of 81 and the vicinity of Lexington. Uh, the only other road in the county with a P, with a, uh, priority safety improvement, uh, ranking is on 501 east of Glasgow. Uh, and I mentioned that they, that VDOT ranks, um, all of these sites, uh, and compares them statewide based on kind of crash severity and crash frequency. Uh, you can see the state ranking there on the right. And I think probably no surprise there, Route 11, uh, north of the city, um, at the intersection of Maury River Road, uh, that, that really kind of stands out. And then also just a little bit up 11, um, there, there's a segment, uh, between the Walmart entrance and North Ridge Lane, um, that I think as you were referring to, is experiencing.
That's huge. I'm just wondering what is going on? I mean, that's like a straightaway right there. I just can't figure out what, how in the world there were there 13 deaths in that straightaway there.
That's crashes and then.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's crashes and severe. So that's, yeah, it's not 13 fatal.
Okay.
That would be, that would be catastrophic and.
Yeah. Well, and it's still ranked 40 though. I mean, you know, I'm still wondering what's going on there that we're having severe crashes.
Uh, how rural Rockbridge County, uh, to have a site that's ranked that high is, I think notable.
Well, and if you've been down there, it's a straight, I mean, it's pretty much a straightaway. There's a little bit of a rise there when you come in, but I just, I don't know what's happening there that's causing that.
Or something, I don't know.
If you got scared of a horror movie at those.
Oh, that's right.
So that's just kind of a high level summary of, um, I think the main takeaways of, um, the transportation needs data that were documented, um, in the chapter. I think when you kind of look at the data, it reflects probably what people experience daily uh, in the county. If you have any experience driving the roads on a daily basis, you could probably ask the average county citizen, where do you think most of the safety or congestion issues are? And they would probably say that Route 11 segment, north of Lexington, around the Walmart area, the 64 interchange.
I think they would say I-81.
Right, sorry.
Single person would say I-81.
Having a, sorry, excuse me, you're right. So I kind of have to, yes, you're, you're completely right. I was kind of coming from it from the perspective of outside of the interstates, um, which I know is kind of a unfortunate way to frame all of this. And I probably, I failed to mention upfront, but, uh, this chapter kind of specifically focuses more on the data outside of the interstates and within the county because, um, improvements along the interstates are essentially occurring at the state level. VDOT approved the I-81 corridor improvement plan in 2019, um, which is funding improvements along the entire stretch of the corridor. So improvements to interstates typically, um, do not come from localities. It's typically something that is addressed at the state level. So when we're kind of talking about something like a county comprehensive plan, uh, the focus is more on, you know, what are the problems that the county can directly address? So.
What's interesting to me though is it's, if I was going to say not focusing on I-81 or 64, I don't think I've ever seen a wreck on 11 north. I'm trying to think, I, I would see on 60 for sure, like 60, but I just, I would, I don't think I've ever seen a wreck there.
I, I will say coming out of North Ri- uh, North Ridge Lane, it, it's been a few years, but we had, uh, several, several accidents there, uh, had several concerns with that intersection. Essentially when you're coming out of North Ridge Lane, the issue at that time was going across the median and there was a heavy vegetation blocking the left-hand side. And so you really had to nudge out there in order to, to see the oncoming traffic. And so we were able to get with VDOT on some vegetation management, if you will, cutting down trees. Uh, and don't know if that had that influence, but we were part of that discussion, I do know.
Right, yeah. I mean, to me, I would think 60, I know I live out 60 west, there seem to be a lot of things further out, 60 Denmark way, you know, that direction.
With a car running in the back of the truck.
Right. Yeah, anyway, just interesting. This is all very interesting data to me. It's been here 25 years. I'm kind of surprised at some of this.
So just wrapping up, uh, the need section, we'll just briefly touch on projects, um, that are documented in the plan. Um, so the last section of the chapter, uh, identifies recommended transportation projects, studies, and then documents projects that are currently funded but not yet constructed. Projects included in the recommended project list, excuse me, projects that are inclu- are included in the recommended project list because, um, one, they directly address a, uh, specific need that was mentioned in the previous section. Or two, they've already been studied or evaluated. And so that's a, an important, um, aspect of project development. Uh, as I, I mentioned, um, it's not only based on a transportation need, but, um, in order for a transportation project to be competitive through VDOT grant funding programs, uh, it has to be studied. So the recommended projects that are included in, um, the county's plan up to this point are projects that are based on needs and also projects that have undergone, uh, an evaluation or study. And so those recommendations have been vetted, they have call assessments and they are ready to kind of move forward um, through the grant application process. And so two of the three projects, um, I think projects two and three, along Route 11 in the Greenhouse Road area, a one for the intersection improvements and one for pedestrian improvements. Um, those projects are currently, um, moving forward through the current smart scale application cycle um, that is occurring right now. Um, and the deadline for that, uh, is August 1st. So, um, those two projects are, are applications that are currently advancing. And if funded, they would be funded 100%, um, so fingers crossed. The other project that is, uh, included is the first project and that is a carryover from the 2016 plan, which, uh, just really mentions the, um, improvements and recommendations from the, the US 60 plan that was conducted, um, in 2015 or 16. Battery is running low. Uh, so here's a list of projects that are already funded right now. So they are underway. Um, they're either in design or, um, will be constructed within the next few years. Uh, they are divided out by roadway improvements. Um, so there you can see that there are a lot of funded, um, I-81 improvements. Acceleration lanes near Exit 205 and Exit 188. Shoulder improvements, northbound and southbound. Some Route 11 shoulder widening and rumble strips along a segment of 11 north between the Walmart and I think, northbound. And then the rest of the improvements there below are just, um, funded paving projects and various kind of more rural roads in the county. Uh, this map just kind of, uh, summarizes the data that I just shared. So, um, the green boxes kind of indicate the location of those, um, highway improvement projects. So those I-81 improvement projects, so you can just kind of see graphically where those are. And then the, the boxes in the blue are, um, the proposed recommended projects that, um, this plan is, is recommending. They're just kind of seeing how those all relate to one another. Finally, so project ideas that, um, maybe address a transportation need, but, uh, require further evaluation or study were placed on the further study list. So this is kind of a, the catch-all bucket where if a need is expressed, we can put it on this list and say, we really should, um, take a second look at this and see if we can evaluate. take a second look at this and see if we can evaluate or, or study this. So we can address this need and identify a set of recommendations and improvements. So this list was developed in coordination with county staff and the community development committee input from last meeting. So this list is kind of a good opportunity to where if there are kind of needs that you did not see reflected within this chapter or perhaps recommended projects that haven't been studied or ideas that aren't fully formalized, we can document those types of things within this list and make sure that they're at least referenced in the document.
What pages that studies and further evaluation on?
It must be a different table seven, six. It's be the same thing.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that has eight projects. Let's see what I got here. There we are. Yeah, it's just carried over. I think so.
You find it?
Yep. It didn't have a page number on it, but I found it. We just had to go back a little bit.
Okay, so that includes my summary of the key takeaways of the transportation chapter. Again, I'll just leave you with the timeline and point out once more that after this meeting, we will coordinate with county staff and kind of further refine, find the draft, review it once more. Incorporate any comments you may have after this meeting. And then we will move forward with submitting the draft to VDOT for their review. So we can make sure that that is taken care of before the county formally approves the document next month.
Thank you.
Lot of moving parts, yeah, I realize, but it was nominal, if any comments, the preliminary submitted to VDOT, they had nominal comments. Is that accurate?
Yeah, we, we provided kind of a preliminary unofficial submission to VDOT, I guess, last month. So they've already reviewed the document. And they, they're, they had no significant comments or suggestions. So the turnaround for their final approval should be relatively quick.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And that's planning commission, I think just about every, most planning commission members had some comments and of course passed those along as instructed to do so by Mr. Beard last month. I think that was June 24th. So we appreciate Zach's time and the central plan. So central Shandale Planning District's efforts on the transportation chapter.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
I had one question before you, before we leave. I apologize. I didn't get through this whole document until just recently and a couple concerning things, the, the bridge conditions in the county and the roadway pavement conditions. It's listed that we're the, we have the highest number of bridges rated in poor condition for any county in the CSPDC coverage area. What, what other counties, I should know this, but what other counties are included in your area?
So five county areas are Rockingham, Augusta, Bath Island, and Rockbridge.
See our competitors are.
Yeah, yeah.
And so do we have that as part of our improvement plan that we're going to look at the bridges and I didn't see anything in there about.
Can't specifically say a goal would be not be the bottom.
Well, no, but I mean, clearly we need to have our bridges looked at and we need to be making a plan. We can't wait till they fall down.
It's definitely something that because VDOT does own all the, the roadways, public roadways in the county and as a result, bridges. So they they have their own rating system on how they evaluate bridge obsolescence and condition. And so I think they dedicate a certain amount of funding every year statewide to improve bridges. And that's channeled down through the VDOT districts and then the localities. So I think if there's, if there are specific bridge concerns to address those, you would need to coordinate with your local VDOT engineer, which.
I think we need to get on that. I mean, I really do.
Mr. Alvin Trout is the resident engineer for the Lexington.
The residency, yes.
The poorest bridges, like we need to start chirping a little louder, it sounds like, to VDOT if they're in charge of them, you know, to make sure that.
It's not related to E D T or LOS, because we would probably rank third among, amongst those counties, I would think, with Bath and Highland. I would anticipate being less on both of those.
Yeah. Yeah.
And there is, I would say, but once annually, there's a, a bridge replacement. I mean, I think one of the more was probably last year out Route 60 West, there was a, a significant project with a ri- bridge replacement. And so there, we do get notice of those. And that's one thing.
I think they, they do provide a caveat with their bridge condition data that just because it's rated poor doesn't mean it's on the verge of crumbling. It's, it's just in need of improvement.
And, and we do hear that, you know, with pedestrian improvements, a lot of times we do hear, oh, when that bridge is replaced, we can make it, you know, wider to allow for better pedestrian access underneath it, but unusually.
Unfortunately, in reference to the US 60.
It was an issue at 60, yeah, absolutely, 60.
Once they replace that, they, you know, the bridge reaches a certain level of deterioration. It's then becomes eligible for replacement and then that's the time that you could.
That's the bypass bridge.
Other improvements.
Sure. But unfortunately, I think at the time it was 2050 or something like that, that was slated to be replaced, so it.
Okay.
Can understand that.
Do you have something else?
Then one other comment, I apologize if I'm a little late to the game, but you know, obviously it's a lot of great data, a lot of good charts and maps. Appreciate all the work on it. And it's, it's definitely VDOT centric and state code centric versus more of a local feel, which is fine. It's data driven for sure. And, you know, we talked about congestion on, on the interstates. I'd like to see a goal or an objective put into a strategy, maybe. To just go on record to state, we support more, more use of the rail lines to transport freight, you know? Put the, put the trucks on the, on the rail lines. I know that that has, you know, it's, it's not a, it's a statewide issue, of course, but and the rail lines may need to be upgraded, but just go on record to state that.
Great. I was thinking the same.
And safety concerns.
We can certainly include that.
Been talked about for a long time. It may never happen, but you know.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We are on to agenda item eight, zoning text amendment discussion. Okay, what are we doing? I mean, I just went on to the next.
We have the land use, we have the.
I know, well, that's.
We allow public comment or public comment.
Okay. Oh, sure. Where, do we have public comment on that? I was. Yeah. So the next thing on the agenda says oh, transportation chapter and land use chapter. We, we need to talk about the land use chapter. Okay.
Yes, uh, let me pull up something here.
All right, this, I'm gonna blast through the first part of this, literally just show y'all, this, this was my presentation like last night's evening. Just purpose conference of plan, you know, histories that we, the, the chapters that we've talked about, some commentary on all those. And then we got into the mapping. Of course, y'all held a work session, the planning commission held a work session a couple of months ago solely to work on the land use chapter and associated mapping. With that being said, the land use chapter, as you know, covers land ownership, covers zoning, agricultural and forestal overlay districts, open space and conservation. To be agricultural and forestal overlay districts and open space and conservation easements. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go fairly quickly through this. Essentially, y'all know the code of Virginia. You also know the, the different types of categories that we have done. Bore y'all with where our public lands are because you know that. So as discussed in the past, the suburban service areas are shown in yellow. At these locations named suburban service areas are defined as bordering corporate cities and towns, all are already characterized by existing development as well as undeveloped properties with access to sound transportation links, public services, strong growth pressures and or existing and or existing zoning for commercial and or residential development. So those would be our, those would be our growth zones in, in order, if you will, the growth zones first would be the suburban service area to, to allow for residential and commercial development, depending on, on which, which area of the county you're in and what the existing zoning of that district is and obviously surrounding zoning. Your next one is in blue. Obviously, it's sort of a hierarchy of growth, if you will. They're shown, shown on blue on the map. This, they're defined as more remote villages characterized by the presence of existing development, accommodating road networks adjacent to or in proximity to Lee Highway and 81, 8164 and 81. Of course, the village of Rafine, Fairfield and Steel's Tavern, Natural Bridge, Fancy Hill areas are within the village service areas. Eight interstate, 81, H64 and 81 are heavily traveled, limited access regional highways. And of course, as we know, their interchanges have been and continue to be prime candidates for future commercial development. So both, some of these areas have existing public water and sewer to them. That would be the Rafine and Fairfield. Both, both have public water and public sewer. Steel's Tavern and Natural Bridge and Fancy Hill areas are not served by public water, but have limited areas of public, I'm sorry, not serviced by public sewer and have limited areas of public water. And then it goes on to state, depending on the level of road network, available public services, surrounding land uses and zoning. These, the types of uses encouraged would be residential and mixed residential, retail lodging, civic, public uses and industrial uses. The next one is the rural villages area. Of course, you know, the crossroad community characterized by the presence of a post office or a core business, houses or smaller lots, in most cases, I think all but two maybe, along a primary state highway. So the ones that, that have been and have been previously discussed and mapped were the Brownsburg and Rafine, Rockbridge, Brownsburg, Rafine, Rockbridge, Bass, Insubious, Cars Creek, Carterstown, Effinger, Cornwall and Arnold's Valley are all examples of the rural village area. I think we made some modifications to the Cornwall area as far as the mapping goes. But I'm fairly sure most, if not all of, oh, no, we did make some slight changes to Rockbridge Bass as far as going all the way down the river and expanding it up to the fire department, if I remember correctly. Uh, the, the rural village areas, uh, well, let me stop. The, the institutional areas, I'm, I'm not sure we got there last night in our discussion. The institutional areas are applicable to property owned by Washington Lee University, Virginia Military Institute, Virginia Tech and the Virginia Tech Foundation is essentially, the, the district should guide expansion and development patterns in accordance with approved master plans for these institutions while ensuring coordination of the campus development with surrounding land uses and overlay district. In this case, so in the past, we've talked about, you know, a potential new zoning designation for the individual rural village areas. You know, we talked about in Brownsburg in years past, we've talked about that in, in other rural village areas. But this particular one, as far as the institutional zone, could be a whole new zoning classification, such as the, the rural villages areas or could be an overlay district on top of, of course.
You said rural village areas as a separate zoning district?
No, they could be. That, that we've talked about it. And you know, so obviously the land use plan is a philosophical document. It does not change zoning. It is, is a tool based on future zoning decisions. One thing that, that essentially the village of Brownsburg has been interested in and, and others in the county, if you will, is, is creating a new district unique to that, to, unique to that area. And that's one thing we don't with Brownsburg. Brownsburg is an unusual example because it's a, you know, it's a core of, I think it was 60 acres zone residential surrounded by residential. And it's certainly, there's less flexibility than some would desire in a, in a residential zoning district. So the, 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 this could be a caveat or, or would be a caveat that, that we could, we could work with the community and develop a, a new zoning district, and that could be unique to each one. I mean, they're, they're each unique in their, in their own right. So that gets us to the rural planning area. Due to its rural location, the majority of Rockbridge County is within the rural planning area. Rural planning areas provide a vehicle which prime agricultural and forestly lands, mountain areas, natural and scenic resources, critical watershed print and sensitive environmental areas as long as large, as well as large tracts lands with rural character may be preserved and maintained. It's the intent of the rural planning areas to protect river frontage, river recharge areas, promote, promote new agricultural and forestal production and current, encourage conservation and maintenance of sensitive environmental areas. Scattered residential uses incapable with land uses are not encouraged in rural planning areas. And it's, it states it's not the intent to prohibit commercial development in the rural planning area. However, the proposed zoning regulations and applications that require legislative action for commercial uses are reviewed and reviewed for capability, compatibility with surrounding land uses. It is the intent that this district, commercial developments can absorb and or buffer the proposed uses in a manner that does not deter, deter, deter from the surrounding rural planning area. We also have something that, that was actually in the plan. It was mapped on the plan, but it's not discussed in the plan as far as the text goes. 2016, the mountain overlay district was mapped, but it was not explained in the document. So briefly, on the eastern portion along the Blue Ridge Mountains, the mountain overlay consists of elevation of 1,600 feet and above potentially. And on the western portion, of course, the Allegheny Mountain Range, the mountain overlay district consists of 2,000 feet elevation or contour line and above. While the vast majority, as you can see on the map, the vast majority of the mountain overlay district is located on public lands. A portion of, a portion of it is located on private property. So to, to essentially to further support the rural character goals, the creation of a mountain overlay zoning district may be explored due to the environmental and scenic cultural value to the community. Areas above these elevations could have additional restrictions associated with maximum height of structures and include additional protections for large-scale development. One other thing I'd like to mention, some language in the land use plan. Of course, with the development pressures of the suburban service area and the village areas, we have some language in there that it would be, may be required, I think is what it says. Due to development pressure, and this is verbatim for both the, all the yellow on the map, the suburban service areas and all the blue on the map, the rural village areas, due to the development pressures of the suburban service areas, and again, the, the village service areas. Support for conservation and or open space easements, and they are different. There is a chapter in the land use plan that attempts to explain the difference between a conservation easement and an open space easement may be required to be reviewed and supported by resolution of the planning commission. Now, y'all, I don't think any, any people in the room here have, have done a resolution support a, we did one today. Any easement that comes through Rockbridge County, whether it be a conservation easement, a conservation easements are held by public, excuse me, a conservation easement is held by a private entity such as Valley Conservation Council. That's a, that's a conservation easement, a bona fide conservation easement that comes under the Conservation Act. But then more particularly, VOF, Virginia Outdoors Foundation is a public agency and they hold open space easements. They're, they're commonly, they're all jumbled up in conservation easement, but technically they're two different things. And so some language in here that if you are located in one of these suburban service areas or rural village areas, which is a limited, limited acreage associated with the overall comprehensive plan. Associated with the overall comprehensive plan, that may be required to be reviewed and supported by a resolution of planning commission. Some places, in some places, it may be more appropriate to have long-term protection in those areas than it is in, obviously, our rural planning areas. And it is required by, I think it's actually by IRS or, I don't know, I don't think there's a state law pertaining to it. That we are required to do a letter of support for all easements, I did one today for BCC and a property in the town. So with that, there's, you know, no, I would say major changes of what y'all previously approved. Or previously discussed, I should say. The mapping has been updated accordingly to the work sessions of planning commission meetings and work sessions that we've had. And this was a, this was a summary of the land use chapter for y'all this evening. So with that being said, we, I think VIVICA has it pulled up and it's, it's online, we were gonna publish it today about two o'clock. But we thought it'd be beneficial just to hold off to have these two discussions and then hit the, hit the send button, so they say, after the planning mission.
Thank you.
That's consistent with the plan.
We are on to agenda item eight zoning text amendment discussion, continue the discussion on revision to the definition of restaurants.
Yes, it is still talking about restaurants, essentially, and as we know, the definition of restaurants, we got with the zoning text amendment. That y'all have recommended approval of this evening, there were some hang up on the difference between.
Were you going to allow for public comment prior to moving on to this?
I mean, we can if we have. That's fine with me, sure, we will, wasn't on my sheet, so I didn't know that we were doing that, okay.
I'll try to be brief, Rebecca Almy in Cars Creek. I just wanted to briefly point out, as people have already said tonight, that the transportation chapter, though we were told that it was minor changes were made to the chapter. It actually increased from twenty-five pages to forty-three pages, which in such a short timeframe seems like a lot of a burden to ask for our citizens to read over and make comment on before tonight's meeting, for example. Additionally, although Mr. Board, Mr. Beard, excuse me, pointed out that the transportation chapter has to be approved so that the VDOT money can come in so that we can have all these things changed. According to Mr. Sladen last night, the comprehensive plan is supposed to be renewed every five years, which after twenty sixteen would have been twenty twenty-one. And yet it is now twenty twenty-four and through various reasons of this and that, it was delayed. And now it feels like it's being rushed so that we can meet this August one deadline, there are quite a lot of people who are interested to know more about what's going on. And it feels uncomfortable to be rushed as we are. The final thing that I wanted to say was specifically as it relates to the rustic rural road provisions. In the twenty sixteen version of the comprehensive plan, we were told a little bit of detail about how that rustic road program is used. And that the actual language of the program was included in the comprehensive plan. Stating that the program would be identified as a practical approach to paving Virginia's low volume roads and aims to keep traditional rural lane ambiance. While improving the road surfaces within the current right of way. However, in the new version of the comprehensive plan, that last sentence there specifically describing the aim to keep traditional rural lane ambiance. While improving the road surface within the current right of way, has been eliminated. On page forty, you'll find a very similar strategy item, continue improvement in VDOT's rural rustic roads program to pave empty roads, period. It removed that important to me part about maintaining the traditional rural lane ambiance. I thought maybe there was a change in the code, but when I pulled up the Virginia Department of Transportation today, their rural rustic roads. Description and information still contains that language about maintaining the rural lane ambiance. I bring that up because one of these roads is the road I live on, and so I'm very curious to know if that language was removed for a reason or if it could be added back if it was a mistake. And the final comment that I would make is specifically about how we approve these roads and which roads are on the list. I briefly looked over the list, I'm not familiar with every single one of them, although I'm familiar with a lot of them, Waterloo Creek was brought up as an example of one that's been done. Many of these roads are one ways or, or at least dead end roads into the county and up into the nooks and crannies of the county. However, Chestnut Road Trail, which is the one that I live on, is not a one-way dead end road, it is a through road. And we already see increased traffic, especially from WNL students speeding on that road, if the sheriff's spending plenty, plenty of time. I'm concerned that paving that road would only make speeding on that road more of an issue. And then as well, that paving that road would actually end up becoming a through road from the exit off of sixty-four at Route fifty, trying, or I'm sorry, exit fifty. Trying to zip around the back way to get to Sycamore Valley, we see a lot of dangerous driving and speeding on that road, and I'm concerned. How does the county confirm or prove, or what do we, how do we know that these roads are not going to increase more than minimal traffic rates? Thank you.
Thank you for.
The county actually reviews and adopts the annual six-year plan, the county board supervisors, I should say. With that being said, I think we last did it in April of this year or May of this year. And so the, in order to get on the rural rustic road program, the common term, when I get phone calls on, you know, how do I get my road paved? Do I want my road paved, that type of thing? I would instruct the citizen to contact their district supervisor, and then the district supervisor brings it up during the cycle of the six years. It's an annual plan that's reviewed, is required to be reviewed, and there is a bona fide public hearing associated with the adoption of the six-year plan. Like I said, I think that happened in May of this year. As far as, as far as my comments going, as far as major minor comments, they were not associated with the transportation chapter, they were associated with the land use chapter. I still say they're fairly relatively minor changes between the mapping and the language associated with the two thousand sixteen plan and the plan we're currently working on. I can understand the comments of feeling rushed, but I will say that we've been doing this since November of twenty-two. And it's been on a public agenda and, you know, same thing from that time, it's been a very public process. That's essentially coming to a head now. Because our goal, as stated throughout twenty twenty-three, was to adopt it in twenty twenty-three, that then happened, obviously, and here we are in June discussing it. So we're, we're proceeding, I don't believe in a, well, I know, not in Russia.
Let me ask one question, yeah, I think he addressed this, we're going from twenty-five to forty-three pages because we went from having one page of goals, is that correct? One page of goals in the transportation to multiple pages of goals. Is that correct? Mr. Beard?
And additional mapping compared to the.
Yeah, I believe that, there was, I think there was two maps associated with the first one, and there's numerous maps now.
Okay, that makes sense, then you've got ten, ten more maps and nine pages of needs where we had one page, so that's a big. And as far as her, and I think a very good point that she made about that last sentence, I think that definitely, I think, needs to be in there, you know, for our community. I think, you know, if we can add that back in, there's no reason that that came out, I'm assuming. Totally, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, very good.
And personally, I have noted that, you know, I shared with the group last night that I lived at Waterloo during the rural rustic program. And it truly was like a sort of a tar and shoot, if you will. But I've noticed even the road I live on now was a rural rustic road program, and it's more asphalt than it appeared. And Waterloo is as well as that, I go up Waterloo frequently, and it does not have that same texture of a gravel with, with, you know, tar and gravel type thing, it's more, it's more of a paved road.
Same thing on cold run, yeah.
I understand the concern, but it seems like over time, it just, it just becomes more of a paved road than a, than a ongoing maintenance of tar and gravel, if you will.
But I think the point, good point too, though, about does that become a throughway now, you know, does it encourage more traffic, you know, do we need to think about that?
VDOT always told us throughout this process, the rural rustic road process, that publicly told us that it does not increase traffic nor speed. And, you know, we were all just, you know, wiggled in our seat, but we said that, I don't agree with that. I mean, as far as increasing speed, it absolutely does, you change from a gravel road to a, even a tar. Tarred and gravel and tarred, if you will. But that could reduce the speed, it increases speed limit, but then you go to a straight flat surface and it increases it. As far as, as far as the through traffic, it really depends on the road, in my opinion, I should say, it really depends on the road. The road we live on now, the paving of the rural, the rural rustic road cer- certainly significantly changed the amount of traffic.
And I'm guessing we have a traffic count on the road now, and if it gets paved, maybe we ought to do another traffic count. And they say that it does not increase the traffic.
Well, at the time, rural rustic roads were relatively due, so I think, I'm not sure if they were dealing with other, others parts of Commonwealth or what they were doing. Waterloo, for example, I don't think had any increase of traffic on Waterloo because they paved it, but Waterloo is a dead end road to Northbound.
I was gonna say, a little bit different than. Sure, okay, great, thank you. Do we have any other, yes, we have other people that would like to speak?
Thank you very much, all of you for making the time to allow us to talk, I know you don't have to, Steve Hart, Cars Creek. Listen to the transportation stuff, a couple of things that might be relevant. When we're dealing with needs, please be really careful, Rockbridge County does not need to add fifty truck parking spaces. Somebody else needs us to do that, but we get all the problems with that. When you add fifty truck parking spaces, you increase the impervious area, you increase the runoff. If that's part of our combined sewer system, we've got to deal with that one way or the other. Fifty truck parking spaces is seven pounds of trash per day, probably on average, that's sixty-four tons of year that goes into our landfill. That decreases the lifespan of our landfill. So all of these things that are seemingly small actually cascade into our county and become a burden upon our county. I'm sorry, it's not my job to provide Snyder Trucking with a place to park, that's their job. And allowing them to offload it onto us means we're footing their bill, they've externalized their cost onto us, that's not okay. One of those accidents that we talk about on I sixty-four, I have responded to those, I can tell you exactly where they happen, right, the things accurate. If there's an EMS call, we actually get reimbursed for that. Car versus deer, there's no reimbursement, our county pays for that. So, yes, it's great that we have an interstate here, but there's a lot of cost associated with that. And we really just need to be careful that all of these things that we talk about in our master planning cascade into a whole lot of other areas. That provide cost to our county, and if we're not careful, we end up footing the bill for somebody else. That's not paying to expand our landfill and do all those other things that we've got to do in the county. One last point, level of service, that's a really tricky thing, because VDOT will give you one letter, but the question is for how many minutes? They've got a standard for when they calculate that, but if you've got an area that's got level of service between four thirty PM and five fifteen PM and it's level of service D. Yeah, that's not good, but what about the other twenty-three and three-quarter hours of the day? If we don't understand the timeframe under which that level of service is taking place and what that actually means. We can actually end up spending a whole lot of money, and it's our money, even though it comes from VDOT, and overbuilding something that we don't need. So that, that's a piece with that, the level is accurate, but what's the timeframe on it, and that helps us make better decisions, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Russell Cars Creek again, and I happen to have read the code requirements in the transportation part, and I thought this was very good, and it's also very difficult to coordinate that with the state operation. But I would, there seems to be some confusion, I don't understand what it is about what I was referring to with these presentations. We're getting, yes, the gist, and we can go on TV, but then you're turning it into a document, and we're not seeing the actual language. And perhaps it's because I went to law school, perhaps it's because I've been a federal and state regulator. I'm used to seeing the exact language before I say there's been a public review of whatever the proposal is.
Thank you.
That will be available online about ten minutes after we conclude this meeting. And I do, once again, apologize, that was not done prior to Monday.
And the next meeting is when, the next public meeting?
The next public meeting is tomorrow night at six o'clock at Oxford Church.
Okay, so for those of you that are interested, come to Oxford Church. And anybody else interested in speaking on either transportation or the land use chapter information? Okay, we will close the public hearing, public comment. Number eight is zoning text amendment discussion regarding the definition of restaurants, again.
Yeah, so we have not done, we haven't done any work since last time y'all saw us on the restaurants. So, so of course, as you know, that this conversation started with the notion of the country store restaurant. And we got, we got involved in the definition of food trucks or lack of definition of food trucks. However, as stated that the, not the last month, but the, I think it was the May meeting, though it had been April meeting. You know, y'all were obviously comfortable proceeding with tonight's public hearing, because the restaurant definition fits well within the country store. There is a, there is a void there for food trucks, and so we've reviewed that publicly, but we'll, we'll try to do our best to get something back in front of y'all next month.
Okay, and I guess I did see him make a note about that, I mean, that is a good point that Mr. Hart brings up about that. What is that, is it a D between these hours or is that the average, like, I mean, I would like to know how they came to that conclusion.
No idea on that one, but we could follow up accordingly, absolutely.
Do we have any other items that we need to bring up at this point? Okay, we need a motion.
Make the motion that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second, and we're all in favor.